All right. Good evening. It's seven o'clock. I called it order the September thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two Perry Township Board of Trustees. Uh, please join me for the pledge allegiance.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
Trustee Mears?
Yes.
Trustee Music?
Yes.
Okay, at this time, I make a motion to accept the consent agenda as submitted.
Second.
Trustee Mears?
Yes.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
Trustee Music?
Yes.
All right, Ms. Gloucester, report.
Do you want me to go over the other items first, or do we want to address the resolutions?
I just know the resolutions out.
Okay.
First.
Okay. Um, so I have multiple resolutions tonight. I request the trustees to entertain a motion to approve Resolution twenty-two thirty-five, a resolution authorizing expenditures from the American Rescue Plan Act funds.
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Music?
Yes.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
Trustee Mears?
Yes.
I request trustees to entertain a motion to approve Resolution twenty-two thirty-six, supplemental reallocations of appropriations for August two thousand and twenty-two with a net increase of thirteen thousand, three hundred dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Music?
Yes.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
Trustee Mears?
Yes.
I request trustees to entertain a motion to accept Resolution twenty-two thirty-seven, our resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor for tax year two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three.
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Mears?
Yes.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
Trustee Music?
Yes.
I request the trustees to entertain a motion to approve Resolution twenty-two thirty-eight, a resolution to establish account code two-two-seven-two-one-one-zero-three-one-one-two-zero-four-two for legal expenses for guidance on the administrative dispersment and documentation for ARP funds.
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Music?
Yes.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
Trustee Mears?
Yes.
I request the trustees to entertain a motion to approve Resolution twenty-two thirty-nine, a resolution to establish account number or account code two-two-seven-two-two-one-zero-three-one-nine-zero-four-zero-three professional and technical services for the police, the mark upgrade.
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Mears?
Yes.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
Trustee Music?
Yes.
I request the trustees to entertain a motion to approve Resolution twenty-two forty-one, a resolution to establish account code two-two-seven-two-two-one-zero-four-three-zero-zero-seven-zero-zero for uniforms slash minor equipment ballistic shields for the police department.
Was that resolution number updated?
Yes.
Okay, forty-one.
Okay. Oh, did I say forty-one?
You did.
Okay, no, it's twenty-two forty. I'm sorry, forty-one's the next one.
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Music?
Yes.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
Trustee Mears?
Yes.
And then Resolution twenty-two forty-one, a rela- resolution to increase funds and appropriations for the ARP expenditures.
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Music?
Yes.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
Trustee Mears?
Yes.
Okay, um, also, I have been in contact with two separate merchant service companies to gather information about accepting credit card payments via our website and or in office. I will be forwarding that information to each trustee individually for future discussion. I contacted the Board of Election to request maps of each of the Perry Township precincts. I thought it would be good to have on file that way if any questions, you know, what area they're in. I know there's a lot of questions, especially in the incorporated areas where they're either Incorporated Brookville Incorporated New London, but they realize their Perry Township as well. I thought that would be beneficial. On Thursday, September eighth, I was advised by the Ohio Department of Commerce, Division of Real Estate and Professional Licensing, that letters were mailed out on September seventh pertaining to the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three uh cemetery grant application that was submitted on July twentieth. Today, I attended an audio conference with the Auditor's Office and accounting firms regarding our upcoming audit. I attended the Montgomery County Township Association meeting on August the twenty-fifth. And I have, uh, I plan to attend the Ohio Township Association training on September twenty-third for reconciliation and proof of cash.
Uh, Golden Cemetery report.
Our cemetery this last month, we had two fair, two full burials, one at Pleasant Hill Cemetery and the other Eversole. I have a new sign, the entrance of Pleasant Hill Cemetery. I just want to remind the public, please remove your decorations if you can. Our fall cleanup is October first. We've dug our foundations. We were pouring concrete on Thursday morning. Uh, we've been trimming back fence rows at our cemeteries. Our roads, we've continued to do our weekly mowing. We've just started our fourth round of roadside mowing. We've been cutting and chipping site distance issues. We will continue to be working on our ditch cleanup and our site distance issues. We extended drainage tile on Schoolhouse where we had erosion along the edge of the road. But we should be getting the crack sealer this month, um, so we'll start hitting those. Chief Road and Schoolhouse Road and move to Amity from there. We're anxious to arrival Bobcat sometime this month. Don't heard the exact date yet. And, uh, we have started going through our trucks in preparation for some of ours.
Excellent.
Caleb, can we get to see on, can we maybe get, uh, see if Patrick can put that on the website about the cleanup? I'm different person.
See, it's already on there.
It's on there.
I, I don't know if it's on there, but well, she's talking about like a banner.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I'll send one in.
Okay, just, you know.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
All right, uh, police report.
Our August staff are posted to our website. Uh, we have one part-time officer in the hiring process, uh, just in the early phases there. That was a township resident out here on Amity Road who's offered to use, uh, their range if we want to host the training. Officer Giozi and I went out, uh, the range is fully equipped, what we need, uh, there's plenty of backstop. It's been well put together. Um, from my understanding, NRA members and things go out and use that range as well. So that's something that we're considering and been working on with.
What's that?
The road here?
Yes, uh, closer to Diamond.
Because I think Brookville uses them too, or did?
They do. Had numerous meetings with individual officers on their career advancement, their goals and their training that they wish to, uh, receive or would like to receive. Uh, in the packet that I handed each of the trustees, you'll open the letter, uh, from the Green County Sheriff's Office. The sheriff over there sent me that letter based upon Officer Wynn's, uh, actions while off duty. Officer Wynn was on his way home from a family emergency at the hospital. Uh, he was still dressed in his uniform because he left here and went straight to there. Uh, he noticed a woman in distress. He pulled over to see what was going on. Uh, alth- ultimately, the female was trying to kill herself. She had plans to go jump in front of a train. Once he stopped her from doing that, she wanted to jump out into traffic. So he was able to calm her down and sit with her and speak with her until a Green County deputy showed up. So it's very commendable of Officer Wynn. I'm doing up a, an award for him, uh, just everything kind of going on at the moment, um, but he is going to be getting recognized, uh, for his actions and saving a life, uh, even while off duty. So, makes me very proud knowing that I got officers out there representing this department in a positive manner, even on their own time.
Above and beyond.
Absolutely, definitely. Everybody may have seen, uh, we got the conviction on Taylor Walters, uh, for two counts of murder and two counts of felonious assault. Uh, he is set for pre-trial sentencing on Wednesday, the twenty-first at two o'clock. Uh, I want to thank all the officers past and present, who has played a, a huge part in assuring that we got this conviction. It was a team effort all the way around. Uh, two thousand and twenty, uh, just before COVID, we're all pretty convinced that half of our agency was infected with COVID. I had half of the department literally out, uh, sick, and then this happened and everybody pulled together, came in um, and did the investigation and everything. So, um, so I would be, you know, big thanks to everybody who played a part in that. Thank you to the community who didn't give up on us, uh, who supported us, knowing that this type of investigation isn't one that you see on TV and it's solved in forty-eight hours or less. Uh, there's a lot of stuff we had to wait on to come back from the crime lab, uh, from the state fire marshal's office because they assisted and everything. So appreciate everybody who had a hand in that. Uh, Sergeant Douglas, um, Trustee Hartshorn, you asked me to get with, uh,
Yeah.
Sergeant Douglas, uh, to see what date, uh, he could go full-time. Uh, I spoke to him earlier today. He is out sick, so that's why he's not here with us. He said he, he would go full-time no later than November seventh.
Right.
And here's the reason why. He wants to give his current employer enough notice. Uh, he's still training an individual, uh, right now. So he's trying to get him spun up, close out some jobs that he's currently on. He also had vacation planned prior to any of this in October. Uh, but he said, based upon what his current employer tells him, if they will accept a thirty-day notice or they only want the two-week notice, he could come full-time sooner than November seventh.
Okay.
So I'm just waiting to hear back from him.
Okay, so we, we need to know the exact date to make the motion because his salary is changing as well, right? So him going to full-time with a new salary, um, once we know that, then we can pass the motion. Sorry to get that done. I do need to meet with him.
Okay.
Um, and you as well. I don't want to cut you out, Luke Chief. Basically, I want to go over the, the latest iteration of the MOU that you gave me.
Okay.
And make sure that he's good with everything that's in there. I've got a few notes of stuff to add. Talking with the new and whatnot, and once we have agreement on the meat of the contract, prosecutor's office will help us write that.
Okay.
So, um, I want to make sure that we weren't in a position where we had to run before we were ready. So the timing actually gives us the time necessary to make sure that we get this done where it's, uh, good for the township, good for him and good for all parties. I did want to say, here, can you pass this to Chief? I forgot to give him the topic. My, my wife is a vet tech. And that said, I, I'm going to say my wife, and then I won't say that. Um, she's been a vet tech for over fifteen years and she's supported a number of police departments with their K nine programs, uh, care, grants for equipment and whatnot. So she wrote up a letter that, uh, then gave it to me. I've given it to the trustees as well as Chief now. Look it over. Basically, a lot of the stuff that was in there is stuff we talked about in one way or another in the last meeting. But she does have a wealth of knowledge and I at least wanted to share that with the township without any connotation of her being my wife or anything else. So, uh, do with it what you will, um. So I think at this point, all we need to do is I need to get with, uh, you and Sergeant Douglas. We'll work through the MOU and then I'll get with the prosecutor's office.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. So the other thing here on my list, I was trying to get through all this first. Trustee Hartshorn, I know you put out a survey when it came to the fire levy and things on the website. I was wondering if we could do the same thing. Uh, you and I have had numerous conversations about the Neighborhood Watch Program. Uh, I went out and found a bunch of research because there's no reason to reinvent the wheel. The wheel is already invented, right? Um, so I sent that, I sent that over to you. But, uh, essentially, this is a program from what I read is what the community members want. And it requires maximum participation from the members of the community. Uh, so some of the things that I have here on, on the list are just examples. If we can do a survey, you know, how many members of the community are interested in having a community watch program?
Right.
I mentioned on here, like, how many members from each quadrant, and I could use this map as a reference on what I mean by quadrants.
Right.
Okay, um, police department, we have it broken down into four zones.
Right.
Zone one is going to be anything west of Johnsville, Brookville and north of Amity.
Right.
Okay. Uh, so that's the northwest quadrant. The northeast quadrant is going to be anything north of Amity and east of Johnsville, Brookville. The southwest quadrant is going to be anything west of Johnsville, Brookville and south of Amity Road.
Right.
And southeast is going to be the remaining of south of Amity and east of, uh, Johnsville, Brookville Road.
Okay.
Because what I would like to do with trying to get our stats down to where we can pinpoint which zone has more of a problematic when it comes to crime. Um, having representatives from each one of those zones or districts, if you will, they can fill us in on what they know, what they've been hearing from their, um, res- or from their neighbors and everything else. Also, to put on the survey, what type of topics would they like to discuss, right? Uh, you know, what are their concerns? And then anything else that they would like to see developed from the Neighborhood Watch Program. So I got a lot of information out there, um, but.
Uh, I, I don't think we have that page that you're talking about.
Yeah, it's right here.
At the top.
It's the second.
Oh, he jumped. God, he's got.
Yeah, I jumped. I was trying to get everything else out of the way, then circle back.
Everybody else seems to be up to speed, but me. Okay, so what I'll do is I'll get with Patrick.
Okay.
And I'll, I'll talk with him about setting up a survey because basically we do it. We have them set it up and then we cross-link it to our social media as well as the website. So, um, that way we can give it, give it about a month of circulation there. We'll, we'll speak to it a few different times and, uh, then I'll bring the results back around the end of October.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, September twenty-fourth, uh, Brookville Police has asked us to assist them with their, uh, five K walk. Uh, just as a reminder, uh, October first through the seventh, I have the FBI law enforcement executive training. And then October eleventh through the thirteenth is the field training, uh, officer school that Sergeant Douglas and I will be attending. Um, and then for the month of August, I've worked two hundred and seventeen hours. And that's all that I have.
Excellent.
Chief, I wanted to add one thing. The length of time for that trial also was a result of at least two delays due to COVID. The minimum I know of two, right?
He, I don't think it was two for COVID. I know there was, um, the postponement because the original judge was retiring like that following week, uh, so they got rescheduled. Then the bunkmate.
Yes.
Uh, came down with COVID, but Taylor was negative.
They're still stretched out?
Oh, yeah, it's, and there was another judge that got assigned. Something happened with that judge so that it got reassigned again. So it took longer than even expected, uh, because of those hoops and hurdles.
But it wasn't necessarily. We were just waiting for the system to do its job.
Right.
So it wasn't.
Well, eh, the, the other part of it is, I don't know if anybody has had the misfortune to actually see how the, the sure amount of paperwork that goes into a case like that.
Oh, my goodness.
Physically, it's it's good.
Anchor boxes on top of banker box.
Oh, I mean, eight of them. The sheer manpower that went into it and a lot of it was, uh, led by Detective Waymire, um, is no small feat. I mean, the work that was put into that case is, uh, and that's something that we've seen that she puts into every case. It, it's not unique to the Walter case, but it's just a testament to the, uh, diligence and the drive that she has in the, in, uh, running those investigations. All right.
Go ahead.
Anything else? Any other questions for Chief? Um, I will say that, uh, at the end of this meeting, there will be an executive session quickly to talk about, uh, Chief's compensation. I've been working with him on a few things and collecting research from around the area, um. And I've got, we, we may broaden the aperture a little bit on the possibility of a vehicle, um. Some of the municipalities I've talked to, they're not necessarily cruiser quality.
Right.
Alibus and Palas, Fords of different types. So if I know what we were talking about previously about, you know, the cost and mileage on some of those, uh, there are municipality vehicles that are also available that may fit what you need, maybe even be a little more efficient.
Okay.
On fuels and whatnot. So, um, we'll broaden that aperture a little bit and we'll talk about that more.
Okay.
All right. All right, uh, zoning report.
All right. The trash assessment information and money assessment along with resolutions were emailed to the Auditor's Office Monday, uh, September twelfth as required, uh, but I do need to request the trustees to entertain a motion to approve the revised ru- resolution twenty-two thirty-three for trash tax assessment for corrected total.
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Mears?
Yes.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
Trustee Music?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, fourth quarter trash bills will be sent out September thirtieth of, um, two thousand and twenty-two. A reminder for those residents, uh, who go elsewhere in the wintertime, Florida, whatever, or snowbirds, they need to contact me so that I'm, I'm able to suspend the trash uh, pickup while they're away.
And Karen, when, when, if you get contacted, please remind them to contact the police department to let them know when they're going to be out as well.
Okay.
We can make sure that their properties are.
Absolutely.
Looked after. Thank you.
I'll be setting up a BZA hearing for October thirteenth, uh, at seven PM and it's for a lot split. And I have three pending permits. And, uh, the permits that, uh, since the last meeting that was issued is one shed, three swimming pools, two decks and two pool barns. And again, I want to remind everyone to please contact this office before building or putting up a pool or getting a shipping container or anything, just to see if you need a permit or not. That's all I have.
Uh, one question, uh, what was the, what was the total amount submitted to the county regarding unpaid trash bills?
It was nineteen thousand and something, but I don't have that right in front of me.
That's a pretty big ballpark.
Yes.
Yeah.
So I, I want to, and I know we, I kind of beat this drum.
Right, what they owe.
This, this is, I've been beating a drum since I've been a trustee. People don't like to pay more for anything. Um, unfortunately, trash bills has been something that people choose not to pay. And when they choose not to pay, they pass the bill on to other residents of the township that do pay their bills. Um, we updated the amount, what was that, last year?
Yes.
And, uh, that was to cover us over a five-year period, I believe. Assuming that everyone paid their bill.
Right.
We may hit something in the next year or two.
Right.
Because of people not paying their bills, it's going to make prices go up even more. So, uh, I just ask all residents to please be neighborly, pay for these services, uh, don't push this off on other people.
And I do know when Ms. Kayler started this, we were at like twenty-seven thousand or something, weren't we? And then she sent a letter out.
Right, it's coming down, but.
They've done very well.
Yeah.
And if I remember right, I think there are about eighty-six residences that have not paid out of thirteen hundred. So that's, it's really gone down.
Yeah.
Any questions, comments? Okay, thank you, Ms. Kayler.
Thank you.
Uh, trustees reports. Uh, in the last month, I continue to administer and update township's social media. Been, uh, working with, uh, and I will say the trustees have done a good job of, of submitting stuff on the social media as well. Uh, as well as reaching out to Oasis to get stuff posted on the website. So I, I definitely appreciate that. I don't want to be the, the choke point. Uh, perform general IT ma- management, maintenance and upkeep of township, uh, systems. Uh, reviewed and submitted the renewal of the township Microsoft Office three sixty-five licenses for this year. And, uh, purchased and installed three new monitors, replacing two old zoning monitors and one for the fiscal officer. Continue to drive through the township, looking for nuisance properties and paying attention to the roads, although I've been paying attention to the roads less. So, and I, I only say that because trustee Mears is now over the roads and cemeteries. So I'm trying to balance my time, my salary. Uh, if you don't know, we only have four streams to manage our pay from. And we have to make sure that, you know, we have a meeting here. This time is usually general fund time and we've had meetings that have run an hour, two hours, which, when that goes up, then we have to kind of look for ways to offset our money without going to the police chief and taking all of his money. So we have a, a short bar for him and then we have a bar for roads, cemeteries, as well as, uh, the trash fund and some of the zoning work. So it's a, uh, it's, it's always something where we're kind of juggling a little bit just to make sure that we don't put too much in any one fund to cause issues with general fund or other issues with the township. Um, I did meet with Chief and Detective Sergeant Waymire on police procedures, process and general information. That meeting was to work on establishing a, basically a physical folder that is, you know, uh, Perry Township Police one-on-one. So Chief doesn't have to have the same conversation with trustee Mears, trustee Music, and then me, trustee Mears and then trustee Music. Or for anyone else that comes in and sits on the side of the table. That way it puts the onus on us to be aware. They just have to make sure that the right contents are in the folder. So that's going to be an ongoing process here. Uh, following in the footsteps of our zoning officer, who is the queen of documentation for Perry Township. There were no processes documented when Karen came in, and if you look in her office, there, on the wall, there are binders stacked about this wide where everything that she comes across, if it's not documented, it gets documented, which is great. Because we want to have that knowledge documented so that people don't have to figure it out for themselves. It's hard enough the first time around. I've also been conducting research on, uh, police benefits and compensation from surrounding municipalities. Uh, this will be twofold, one to inform our police levy that we're likely putting on the ballot next November in two thousand and twenty-three. But also for making sure that our police chief and officers are, are compensated at a fair amount. For a very long time, we have been what I would consider to be kind of a jump-off organization where people come in, right out of school, they become officers, they get some experience under their belt, and then they go looking for better pay. I will also say that a number of those end up coming back because the grass isn't greener on the other side, um. But we do want to make sure that our officers are well habited for the work that they do. Uh, we now have a twenty-four by seven police office, uh, protecting Perry Township in the surrounding areas, and we want to make sure that we build a solid force that stays and doesn't just use us as a jumping off point to go somewhere else. So, uh, that's important work to do, and there will be information on that research coming out to inform conversations here in the near future as we start getting ready for the police levy. Okay. On September twentieth, I'll be taking the where the trustee responsibility ends and the fiscal officer begins. I've been looking forward to that training. I really need to know where that line is, so I stay well away from it. And with that, that is all that I have for this month. Uh, trustee Mears?
Okay, first off, I want to thank our police department chief Littleton on all the hard work they put in on the Walters case and they go to convi- uh, conviction. Help me.
Conviction.
Thank you. Uh, I met with Mr. Hoops about what projects and what items he would like to have for the maintenance building from the ARP money. Uh, Mr. Hoops and myself will be driving around and looking at the roads that need attention. Ed from Sewell Water informed me that his office has contacted the firm in charge of the wetlands at Sycamore Park, in case anybody should get a phone call uh, regarding the weeds. And at this time, he has not heard back from them. So if anybody gets a phone call, he has contacted them, but he's not heard back because he's not happy with them. Uh, a project that Ms. Ms. Kayler and myself will be working on is Lewis Crowe property. Uh, Ms. Crowe has passed and her son has abandoned the property. So now we have three in a row and I'm not sure what our next step is or what do we do there. Um, and I have contacted, I know you said about a sign, but I did say something to you. Um, I have contacted a gentleman by the name of Mr. Spittler, who, who does signs to see if he would be interested in maybe doing a sign for Pleasant Hill Cemetery. Uh, I will be meeting with him out at the cemetery and give him some di- ideas and see what the cost would be. A more kind of fancier.
The sign out there is not fancy, but it works.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
It's nice, it's reflective. You don't have to squint to look at it.
But I would like something a little.
Oh, most definitely. But I mean, in the interim, it's, it's, it's nothing fancy, but it's a functional sign.
Yes. So hopefully I'll bring. So hopefully I'll bring that back. That's all I have.
Thank you. Trustee music.
I attended the Montgomery County Township Association meeting. The Ohio Township uh, Association Leadership Training Meeting. The day before that meeting, I was in Columbus for the, not really township related, but uh, the Ohio Small Business Ohio Top. Ohio Chamber of Commerce Small Business Council, where there was a lot of information on monies coming in. More or less to businesses, but it does affect the township as well. One of those again, and I've spoke on it before, is uh, broadband money. There is a ton of money coming. Um, and it was recommended that we reach out to our state representatives. Uh, to request to see how do we get that? Uh, and the the gist is, we don't have great internet in Perry Township, so. If they don't know you don't have great internet, you need to let them know. So I met with Representative Farmer, who will be our new representative. Come January or uh, either January or November after the election. He has already informed me that he's put the request in and he says money is on the way to Perry. I don't know what that means. I I do know that the first part is just a information search. So they come out, they do a survey, they check to see what. Well, I think we all know the needs out here, so hopefully that comes to fruition. Uh, I went to Clay Township's trustee, uh, they had a special meeting with, and I mentioned this, our last uh. Work session, our special meeting, but I just wanted to reiterate it. Uh, they have not done anything yet. They met with the Dayton Foundation to create an endowment fund. Uh, for the purposes of perpetual care of cemeteries and historical uh, preservation. Uh, so this is something where if someone was to pass and wanted to leave money to the township, this is an avenue for them to do it without it being on our books. Per se, it is something that we could draw from free of charge. We just have to get with them, get more information to make sure it's gonna fit Perry Township's needs going forward. Trustee Wolf said he would reach out to me next Thursday, uh, after their special meeting, that after they've discussed it. So I'm kinda following his lead. Uh, if if it's good for Clay, right next door, it's probably something that. We should consider entertaining, so.
Need to make sure that you ask what their fiscal officer has discussed with the state regarding auditability issues. And uh, management concerns.
That was one of the questions I think they asked as far as um, because it's not on our books, right? It's it's our money, but it's not, so how do we account for it?
Right, it's like an external trust.
Uh, ba- basically.
Yeah.
So anyway, that's uh, still working down that avenue. Oh, and and I also want to commend Police Department uh, on the Walters case. Uh, I wasn't here during that time, obviously I was a resident, but uh. Very important to see that through, so very proud of them.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, old business. Do we have any old business? Uh, I know that there was been some, I think I talked with fiscal officer Grill about it. The, we had discussed about a year ago, a a chunk of land across from Eversole Cemetery. And uh, a resident had come forward and asked, they had been using that as an easement to their property. Um, and they were interested in purchasing it. Is there any issue with any of the trustees moving forward and getting that assessed? So that we can move forward. Basically, it's it's a piece of land across the street from the cemetery, which is where they used to park the buggies. First for funerals. The township owns it, we don't use it. It literally sets up on uh, this residence right at the front of his fields. He's used it for as an easement for a while. Um, but he'd like to just have it so that it's done and. Uh, we had discussed that it was a possible revenue stream, not a big one, but getting rid of something that the township isn't using. And turning that asset into some uh, financial gains.
You don't use it, do you?
Uh, I mean, occasionally we do for funerals. We will sit there and wait for them to come over so we can stop traffic. Right, Police Department sits there as well. I mean, that's the only way we use it for though. It don't mean we don't mow it, we don't.
No, if this comes to fruition, if we can ask him if we could still use it to park there for cemetery or.
Right, that could be part of the conversation.
Exactly.
Yeah. So um. I don't think we need a motion for this or anything, because it's not deciding anything, but it's, we we can move forward and figure out what the assessment process is for that fractional lot.
Right.
Um.
Does that have to be done by um, survey?
Well, probably once it gets to the purchase.
Yeah, once it gets to that point, but just to try to assess the the. Value of it, so that we have a starting or a a point to start conversations with the resident. Could you look into that?
I will.
Find out.
Yes, I was thi- I was thinking of um, um, the surveyor Stephen Pope.
Okay.
To ask him.
Probably get to that point until the purchase of it.
It's like the size of two, two driveways.
It's gonna be on the uh, for the, the auditor's office is gonna have the dimensions anyway, so we'll know what the.
Right.
I'll, I can pull that up, yeah.
Okay, we can discuss that in a future meeting.
And then Perry B.
And well, and that was brought up as well, is Perry B, does it, does Perry B have value to us as a township? I mean, it's, once upon a time, it was, it was a voting location. It's probably one of the better buildings, not this building in the township, which is not saying much. Um, and there's nothing against anybody, it's just, it's an old building, you know, the the wood is is rotting from the inside out. Um, we do use it for storage purposes. For stuff that we should probably just get rid of instead of putting.
Some of the stuff that's in there came out of our cruisers.
Right.
So when we go to resell them, we take, put those seats back in and everything else.
Right, wouldn't we be farther ahead if we just bought a storage unit here? Build a pad and get rid of that place. I mean, we don't.
Because it needs new, those doors.
Right. Siding needs to be heated. I mean, starting to buckle, we're starting to buckle on it.
It is, yeah.
Leaking.
Where is that?
Uh.
Freaking uh, Clayton.
Clayton and Air Hill.
Oh, yeah.
Right, were those all, all three of those?
That one building that just doesn't make sense.
Make sure you get.
Yeah, we used to uh, there, but uh, we thought, at first, we thought that's where the cemetery was. And we kept driving around. I know.
I mean, I guess you could use it at some point. Well, I I would say that, you know, we have it on our zoning text that shipping containers are a no-no. So I don't know if we could turn around and do one.
No, just a, a storage barn.
Right, a storage barn, gotcha.
And they have them.
Um, then we do have, we do have uh, plenty of room out of the maintenance garage property, not the building, but outside the building. To put stuff and that's already a a secured area that's monitored and watched by the police department and others, so. You wanna, I'll look into that, see, see. I mean, Perry B's not very big and I, I think everybody knows that. You'll store as much stuff as fits in a place that you're gonna store stuff, so it doesn't necessarily have to be as big as Perry B. It could be a little bigger. There's, I know there's stuff in this building that could be shuffled off. A little bit off the mortal coil, um, put out there and uh, as we figure out how to do. That's the thing, is we have to figure out a process. Well, I mean, the police vehicle components, that's one thing, but we do, I mean, we have shelves out there, we have. Some of the old school dust, we've got racks and also, uh, there's all sorts of stuff. So we also have to come up with a a process to disposition stuff that goes into storage, so it, that's not where it stays. It goes to storage when it's no long, when it's identified as no longer needing to be used and then we, that starts a process of.
We have put on go deal and we haven't been able to.
We have, we have and and, but if if we can. I mean, we talked about scrapping things in the past, we could definitely scrap those metal shelves if if nothing else. Or fi- just figure out a way to disposition them. It, that's the thing, is we can't just hold on to stuff uh, perpetual uh, forever, so. Okay.
Speaking of that.
Yeah.
It, would it be okay with the trustees if I reach out to the Historical Society to see if some of the old books and stuff that we have? Would be of anything they would be interested in? There's a lot of old books, especially back in the fiscal officer's office, that.
Yeah, um, I I went down that road a little bit. I think that was what, about a year ago, when I worked with the. I worked with the Historical Society and they pushed me to uh, an archival.
All right.
Department at Wright State, because they do, they manage that as with uh. And there was the, our uh, what what's the name of that? The the filed, the disposition paper that we write up for how we're gonna deal with. Digital media, physical media, stuff like.
Retention stuff.
Right, um, they keep, they actually get that and they keep it on file through the state process.
Well, this is actually older stuff. These are just like law books.
No, right, and so some of that stuff maybe, I know that the the uh, we had talked about some of the ledgers and uh.
There's also in there uh, the um, grade books.
Yep.
I mean, there's a lot of.
Some of that stuff, yeah, they didn't have a whole lot of interest in like our older ledgers and whatnot, but some of the schoolhouse stuff from this building.
There's stuff over there, isn't there? Old books and stuff.
Where?
The maintenance building, somewhere.
There's a bunch of stuff in that record.
Yeah.
Full. This old, yeah, I mean, I don't know, from sixties, fifties.
You even brought in some pictures.
Belong to it.
Yeah.
Well, and and we are getting to that time of year where we have to complete our annual inventory. And stuff that we don't need that can go away, it's better before the inventory starts at the beginning of the year, so uh.
We'll give in, we'll give in the record room.
How about it?
But before those records go anywhere, you gotta have your record retention policy done.
Yes.
Yeah, and we do.
Okay.
We, that's what I was talking about, is we we gotta.
It's not completed.
But it's not completed for all the.
Right.
Older stuff that.
Right.
We don't necessarily know where to, so. Okay, any other old business? New business? And. Unmute me, mute Brad, there we go. Uh, new business, a new business?
Did we pass a resolution for the dirt catcher?
You got your stuff.
I have a resolution point there.
Yeah, I didn't see it. Yeah, yeah. Better to ask, you never know.
Right, I don't wanna speak for it and then all of a sudden, yeah.
I mean, I didn't hear your stuff, I definitely heard.
Okay, uh, no new business. Is there any visitors that wanted to speak?
I have a list of questions.
Please come to the podium.
And it's some of it, I haven't tried to write it out, my section of.
Make sure that didn't turn on.
My name's Albert Acker.
One second, one second.
It's on.
Okay, it's, he touched that, I just wanna make sure.
Yep.
Do the same thing. Oh, is is the white light on that? Okay, as long as the white light's on, you can be heard. Uh, just please don't try to ruffle papers, cause that's all that they'll hear.
Gotcha. So I've got several questions. Most of this has to do with uh, money. It's not about any one department, it's not about defunding the police department, though I do have a lot of questions about it. Um, so kind of bear with me if you would. Um, I'm looking at the May fund summary. The American Rescue Plan uh, says there's a hundred and ten thousand dollars left in that. Where is that money or has that money been spent?
So we had a special meeting, so, and we finalized uh, disposition of the second tranche of funds that they gave us. So the resolution that was passed at the beginning was basically us allocating those funds to be used by the police department, the roads department.
For the second group of money.
Yes, so basically the second group of money comes into the first group and then we have a listing, which we have to document for federal purposes.
Okay.
Of what we're spending it on, how we're putting that out in resolutions and then it's all required to be sent up.
Okay, so that money is all spent or allocated to be spent somehow, some way.
The majority of it is, yes.
Okay, so my next question, which was really gonna be my last question, was have we looked at. Things like computers, are we donating any of that money? Because that, my understanding, and and maybe I should ask it this way, was there any set rules? That said, this money could be allocated this way? Because on Spectre News, there was a reporter on there saying they gave out a lot of money the first go around. And nobody kinda watched to see where that went. The second go-around of money, there are people watching to see where that money's being spent at. So a question came into was, if that's COVID money, eh, everybody wants to call it different things. But what did we use that money on? Did we look to see whether there were families in Lebanon? Or Brookville that reside in Perry Township that need help with computers? Uh, help with food, anything, or did we just say that's Perry Township money? And we're gonna buy new tractors and new police cars and what what did we do with that money?
Okay, so I can speak a little bit on that. Um, there were two different sources of of funds that were distributed. The first source actually was distributed before I came into office, that was the coronavirus funds. We did not get any funds from that. We did not apply nor did we receive any of those funds. The second round that we've got is what they refer to as the American Rescue Plan Act. The American Rescue Plan Act came about because the restrictions that were in place with the coronavirus funds. Limited smaller municipalities such as townships. And what this one did was it allowed us to allocate it as lost revenue. Because when the lock or the shutdowns were in place, all that stuff, people were traveling less. It cut into the income sources for the townships, because we lost a lot of fuel tax, those types of things.
Understand.
And the big things that they were pushing for, the biggest one originally they pushed for was like sewer and water. While being out here, that's nothing that we have an option for. So then the next step was to do, you know, necessary uh, uh, stuff here. Like we used part of it to upgrade our system for the meetings. That way people that don't feel safe coming into the building or can't can see the meetings via Zoom. So we did a lot of stuff like that with it. The rest of it we've used to do things like with the roads and cemetery. Stuff to get them to be doing what they need to be doing easier. Um, while we're, we're getting the Bobcat.
So we bought a new Bobcat.
Bought a new Bobcat, we're getting a Dura Patcher, a Dura Patcher, they've talked about it quite a bit. Is where they can go in and make repairs to the roadways, both in the roadways and in the cemetery roadways. Um, doing repairs to the building, like the maintenance garage, they had a mold issue out there. And a lot of stuff that needed to be taken care of, we use some of those funds for that to make it a safer environment to work in.
Okay, so before we get too far, and first off, let me say, I'm not, I, this isn't. I'm, I'm just looking and asking questions is all I'm doing, okay?
So.
I I'm not against Perry Township.
No, 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 so so let me.
I just, there's just a lot of questions I have in my mind, like.
Let me add to what fiscal officer Grill was saying. When the America Rescue Plan money came out. Federally, it came to the states. The states figured out what they were gonna use and they have a number of plans, the broadband.
Uh, project.
Part of that. That's a state project that they're working, because if the money actually came down to the townships, we wouldn't get enough to do much of anything. And that core infrastructure is best served at that level. So there's a chunk that stays at the state level for their, they have uh. The broad lit broadband grants that they're working on, they have uh, I T funds for computers for rural. Uh, families that don't have I T or the ability to uh, there's also training involved. So they know how to use a P C and they can do stuff regardless of age or income. Um, and there's a number of other plans, the the interstates, the roads and whatnot, they took a hit too. When COVID hit, so they have the stuff that they're responsible for, it stays at the state level. Then they took a part of that and they started chunking it up to the cities, counties, et cetera. At the end of the trough. They said, oh yeah, townships, we weren't included in the initial definition of how the ARPA funds were gonna be distributed. They fixed that. So we ended up, I think we got two, they call them tranches. So we got two payments of like a hundred, was a hundred and thirty-five or a hundred and sixty something?
Hundred and sixty was the last one we talked about.
Right, so it was about a hundred and sixty, they, they gave us a little bit more money at the end of the first tranche, right? So out of that, um, we had a number of areas where we've been trying to. Modernize kind of, but just kinda get to a level of basic competency. The, the meeting P C that's here, uh, we got a new P C, actually from the police. Cause the police spent some of their funds for new PCs, so we got new PCs, monitors, I T infrastructure for the township. We also got a couple of systems out the maintenance garage, right? Just keeping up with the times so that we can get work done. Just keeping up with the times so that we can get work done. In the first tranche, I think we took, we have all this written down in minutes, and I'd be happy to give you the minutes for a lot of stuff, cuz I don't wanna leave something out and leave you.
It's fine, I, because that's another problem I have. So I've been reading through minutes and minutes and minutes and some of it's in there, but one of the comments you made in one of the minutes was you said that part of that money could be used to pay off this fire emergency debt that we owe one that hasn't, that been paid? Or have we not used that money? Because the money, we bought a, a Bobcat, but we didn't pay for the fire support.
Have the money set aside for that. We don't pay it till the end, uh, end of our contract, though.
Okay, so that's gonna be paid at the end of the contract.
Correct.
Okay, great.
That was just the difference.
And that was just in the resolu-, or in a resolution that was passed when we had.
That was.
Need to read resolutions is almost impossible, cuz all I get is resolution number. I can't dwell into, at least I haven't been able to find it. Dwell into that to see exactly what each one of those resolutions been.
Can actually send you a copy of the minutes, which are much easier to read.
No, I, I can, I can get the minutes.
Well, and the thing is, is that we just approved minutes tonight as part of our consent agenda. It had when we just went through that la- latest round of that. So those will be available online here in the next day or so.
If I know, cuz I know the last one I came to that minutes and meeting, I could see right away. But I haven't been able to see a fund appropriation summary since May until today. I was able to see July's, I believe. So there's a lag there and I'm looking to things and going, no, it's not there, it's not there. I, I gotta wait for somebody.
Can I say something before in that?
Sure.
I know.
Your meaning.
And I know, I, I kinda understand what you're saying, but on with the maintenance garage and stuff, this is things that Mr. Hoops is dealing with.
Somebody's old gun.
That's.
It looks like one does.
That's a gas, that goes into your gas sink. So that's what we're talking about. This is where our money's.
Aggregates.
Understand, I get it.
I just wanted to make sure. We're not just going out and buying a brand new Bobcat because.
Sometimes I wondered then, and again, I don't know who else been here the longest. It makes me question, what was, who was spending all the funds before? Because somebody was spending money before to the point that they weren't upkeeping this equipment. So, but that's, that's another question to myself.
The only thing that I'll say to that is this. There was actually a level of pride not spending money previously. Money that sat, they thought was a good thing. And meanwhile, when Mr. Hoops came in, uh, we've had three vehicles, I think, that have gone inserviceable. Had to pay. Engine in one of the trucks, uh, the, they the transmission and whatnot are rusting out and falling out of the vehicles. They're on the verge of being non-serviceable. So one of the things in the ARPA funds is I think we set aside, was it a total of eighty, eighty to ninety? Cuz we took some out of the first tranche and second tranche. We need new dump trucks. Otherwise, we won't be able to plow and spread salt when winter comes here. And we've been talking with the state about getting some of their used vehicles, which is great for us, because we don't have to pay. The cost of new vehicles has gone up astronomically, but getting a used vehicle that's in good shape and well-maintained, that can buy us years, you know, and, and without breaking us monetarily. So just cuz we have that money aside, doesn't mean necessarily we're gonna spend that money.
Right.
And then if that money doesn't get spent, we have till twenty twenty-six.
I was gonna say, cuz.
To reattack and, and use funds that we have. Sorry, that, that was just a notice. Um, so we don't have to spend the money right away either.
Right.
We're trying to spend it smartly, and then if things end up changing where we pay less, we had to pay a little bit more at the end of this year, well, not the end of this year, I would say about the end of next year, we'll have a better idea of how we can reuse those funds.
But how much of those funds will be left?
Well, that's what I'm saying is, right now, they're almost all allocated. That doesn't mean they're all gonna be spent. Um, but I, I want people to understand that the piece that we got at a township level is nothing compared to what the state got, and the state is building these programs. No, and I want, I want residents to understand. We didn't spend what we had necessarily on the residents directly. But people sure appreciate plowed road. They appreciate being able to have water drain away from their properties. So we've had to invest a bit of the money in infrastructure for the township. Because one, it hadn't been done in a very long time. We were in the negative on capabilities and assets to be able to do the work that we need to do. And that's what the money was for. The money was for us to base, you know, to basically build those, uh, that infrastructure back up to be able to be at a level of performance of residents desert. Larger municipalities got a lot more money. Dayton got a lot of money. Huber Heights, even Huber Heights, I mean, so when we say that, that, I think it was around three hundred and twenty, give or take, um, three hundred and twenty thousand between the two tranches. We've been extremely transparent on what we've spent it on. We've had discussions and evaluations over priorities of the police, the roads, the cemeteries, the infrastructure of the township. And we've set some money aside and we've planned to spend some money because right now, it doesn't look like prices are coming down anytime soon. So we have a need, and if we push it down the road, we can only use these funds for so long. And we're not guaranteed to not see more impacts.
Is it gonna go up or whatever?
Right, so, but your questions are valid, a- and, you know, we can provide you clear and concise information as to what you're looking for without it being in minutes or in, uh, in a resolution. So if you give me a list.
Okay.
Give Ms. Kaler a list.
Okay.
We, we can basically send you an email or we can print it out and have you come up here, whatever works for you.
Okay.
And we'll give you a list of what we're doing and how we're doing it. And then that way, it's actually in a, in a less confusing medium.
No problem. So lemme, lemme, I get it. Just a couple of the things real quick. Um, cemeteries and roads. The last meeting I was at, I was understanding that you guys actually mowed the cemeteries, but you don't. You guys actually contract that with somebody.
We contract four of them and then we move the others.
The other nine.
The other nine, yeah.
Oh, that's.
The, okay.
The, the act is ones.
The act of four.
We.
You contract.
Yes.
Okay, so on the, on the summary line, where does that say, or on the financial, where does that say how much money's being paid out for those contracted services?
It's on the, in the financial report under the Rose Cemetery, which is on twenty twenty.
Yep.
And there should be a line on there, specifically into the appropriation designated out under contract.
Contracted services, okay. I just wanted to make sure I was reading that right.
Yep, there's actually two contracted services. The larger one is what goes to the mowing and upkeep. Then there's a smaller contracted services for like when they have to have people come out to cut trees down that we're not able to, or when we had to have the archway removed and we had to pay for those services.
So, um, when it comes to meetings, this is the website that says the special meetings. Um, this one said, May, agenda minutes and recordings, none other since May. And I thought, well, how is that? You guys don't, your sign says you have special meetings. But it doesn't say when and who's invited to those special meetings, or the minutes or the recording of those special meetings. So I can't see those special meetings?
We need to have that. We didn't have, if there's nothing there, we did not have a special meeting.
We haven't had one.
Patrick had it built automatically in there. Remember how we.
Right, so at the beginning, when we started the contract, um, they put in there all of the board of trustee meetings, which is once a month. And they put in a couple of special meetings as structured. Um, so if there's, I'll get with them and have them remove stuff that's not out there. We're very, uh, we've been very well trained in making sure that information gets to them quickly. They get it uploaded and available on the website. So if there's something there that's just blank, chances are that meeting never happened because we would have set them the minutes and they would have.
It says, none's happened all year, other than May.
Right.
O- okay. Okay, last but not least, and I, and, and I know I'm gonna say this, and I said at the house, I'm not here to defend the police, really not. But the questions I have about the police department is gonna sound like it. I, I'm looking at the call for service report from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one. And the only two categories that went up, well, three categories. Mental health went up a hundred and fifty percent, went from seven calls to eighteen. I got it. Traffic stops, six hundred and forty-three to a hundred and ninety-one. So if I take this report and look at this, in my mind, it says that Perry Township has three brand-new vehicles. Six or eight full-time police officers, five or six part-time police officers, an evidence vehicle or forensic vehicle. So we could enhance our traffic stops by, by eighty-five percent. That just makes sense to me. Doesn't make sense the amount of money that's being paid out for traffic stops. There's gotta be something else. I looked on the webpage for your reports for May, June, July. One of the problems is they're not formatted the same every month. So you gotta kind of decipher them and kind of move them around. Two homicides, three years ago. In May, uh, out of a hundred and eighty-seven traffic stops, there was thirty-three citations. Thirty-three tickets, okay. In June, a hundred and sixty-four stops, thirty-nine citations. Okay, um, and two felonies. Okay, July, a hundred and fifty-nine traffic stops and thirty-eight citations. And two assaults. How much money is this police department in total getting? And you're talking about a tax levy next year for the police department. So in the last two years, two felonies, three assaults. That's a lot of money. Um, New Lebanon. Four marked cruisers. I believe I seen the unmarked ones. Ten full-time police officers, two part-time. I, I'm going, what, how much bigger does this police department have to be? How much more money do we have to spend? But this, there's gotta be more to what I'm getting for my dollar. I, it, there's something. And I don't know what it is. I can't see it. And again, I'm not here to defend the police department after all the praise earlier this evening, and I get it. I was in the military for twenty years. I, I know what it's like to do selfless service. Okay, I get that. But the people of Perry Township are spending a lot of money for new equipment. So they can enhance traffic stops by eighty-five percent? There's gotta be something else. It, there's gonna be something else that you, that hasn't been told to us to accommodate that kind of money. I, I, but I don't, I can't see it. I don't know where it's at.
Well, I, I actually, uh, you can see it because our budgets are published every year. Creations at the police. What the township pays. Um, and I would invite you to talk to, let's see, Harrison Township, Washington Township and Jefferson Township. Those are three townships that actually have the sheriff's office by in their police force. And it's not cheaper than them doing it, right? So what I'm saying is this.
Oh, yeah.
Invite a core service.
There's gotta be a way to, there's gotta be something else I'm paying for, or, or the taxpayers of Perry Township are paying for. There's gotta be a way of getting that information up to them so they can say, cuz next year, if you say, hey, we need more money for the police department. I, I don't know if the last one passed. But a lot of people are gonna go, wait, you just hammered me with a fire four mil on my fire, and now you want another three mil for the police department? And these are the statistics they're gonna see? There, there's gotta be something else. That there's gonna be some way of getting that information out there. It says, this is what our police department's doing for, for the amount of money that's being paid.
When it comes to our stats, okay, I can sit down with you and show you the forty-some pages that I get from the county. What I go through and pick is what has been requested from residents that they want to see. So everything that you see there, it's not an all-inclusive list. Another thing, if I put everything on those forty-nine to fifty pages that I get each month into a stat book, your book's gonna be this. Are you gonna take the time to read all that? And, and I'm not, I'm not asking to.
I probably will.
You probably will. And, and that's good, but the majority of people would not. Like, they would look through the first five or six pages and go, oh, I don't have time for this. I'll read it when I'm sitting on the toilet, right? And then it never makes way there. But if you wanna sit down with me, I can show you. Um, if there's something that you specifically would like to see, I'd be more than happy to include that to our stats. And I'm hearing you about, about the format. I will get with my guy who builds this and we'll, we'll have a consistent format. So that way you're not hunting and pecking, you know, trying to piece things together.
Because it is a little tough to read. Um, I see New Lebonins, New Lebonins, they list every call. Every call, what address they went to and what the disposition was. I, I'm not saying I need to see every call from a hundred and sixty-five traffic stops. That's not what I'm saying. I'm just saying that, that for Perry Township people, eight hundred and, I think you said it was eight hundred and seventy-two in one of your, um, meetings here that are voting people. People wanna go, wait, they want more tax money? For what? And another vehicle, another, you know, what is it that we want for the amount of money that we wanna continue to tax people for? And, and again, I'm not here to defund anybody. I'm here just to say, where's all that money going? That's all.
Well, I know a couple of years ago, I think this is when you first started, uh, the residents wanted two people on each shift. And that would be, you know, that was their major concern. They wanted two people on each shift. And at, when, when chief looked at the cars that we had bald tires, they were terrible.
I, I get it.
So, you know, those are something that we had to do, but that was one of the things that the residents requested was two people per shift.
And the other thing is, we don't own those vehicles and we're leasing those vehicles.
No.
But we.
We lease them in that we bought.
We lease them in.
It's called a lease. It's just the two payments.
Yeah.
Option, we do own them. And I understand the whole vehicle. So you got a guy on patrol and then you need a backup and then if you got a car down for maintenance, I understand all. You know, I, I've dealt with, um, having all kinds of military vehicles that I had to deal with, and so I get that. I'm just saying that at some, somewhere.
Have to be.
Was probably asking the same question.
Sure.
They're just not here.
And we're not, and I understand, and, and, and it's also like, uh, trustee Harkinson about the, the, help me, the sheriff's department. Now, if we didn't have them and someone broke in the house and was attacking your wife, they had to call the sheriff's department, see how long it take them to get out here. Other side of Jefferson Township, so out the door, they even get there. Yeah.
They won't, they won't be patrolling. They'll be.
No, they will not be patrolling.
If. If we don't have a police force, we would have to look into.
Right.
Putting the sheriffs on contract to do this. So I, I understand, I understand what's happening, uh, and the picture that, that you're trying to paint. Uh, and I appreciate that. That's why I said, one, if you wanna get with me, I can show you those. Uh, they're even a public record. You can call down to the sheriff's office and, and request it. That's what I do. At the Fert, well, actually, they got it built for me now. That's just an automatic email that I get all those.
But eight hundred and seventy-two voting residents of Perry Township probably are not gonna do that.
Right.
Me, I might.
Out, out of fifty.
I've got a lot on my head.
I, I think that's, that's important to understand. We had eight hundred and some vote out of fifty-two hundred residents like in Perry Township. That's why we did what we did with the, with the fire levy. We collected the information, we put it on the website. We had meetings to discuss it. We're, we're still looking into having the town halls closer to the election. So people could come and ask their questions directly to the, the fire personnel. You don't have to go through us to be able to have those conversations, but we're gonna facilitate that so people can have their questions answered, because there's stuff you're gonna ask us that we would have to run and tell them, and it's a lot easier to have you go and ask them.
I would never talk to the fire marshal or the, the chief of the fire department in New Lebanon, sat over there and talked to him for an hour. Um, he was more than happy to explain to me all the ins and outs of, um, in fact, that's the term he uses, Perry in and Perry out as far as incorporated limits of, um, New Lebanon. Never heard that phrase before. I understand it vividly now. And but more than overboard to explain to me exactly how that worked. So again, but again, there's not that many people in Perry Township that's gonna go over there and sit down and talk with the fire chief and get.
Well, and.
This work. And that's why we're trying to educate. And that's why we're trying to educate. I don't mean educate, but you know, that's like Chief Littleton. Saying for you, please come in and sit down with him. His door is always open. He can meet anytime, anything, questions or anything. He will do that. And the same way with the fire department. So I'm cutting you off.
No, 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 you're fine.
Go meet with Mr. Or Chief Fletcher. You know, like Jason said, this is, this is not us. This is the fire department coming to us going. We need this much money or you're not going to get it. So.
Part of what wasn't understood before he went out there is when we first, when we came to that first meeting, which is also a learning curve. You know, it's going to take several of these meetings to figure out who's doing what. And, I mean, I know what police do. I, I understand, but I. It, it takes a minute to understand exactly what's going on here.
Right.
And it's the same, the first meeting we came to. And I'm not a stupid woman. But, and this might sound like I am, but I thought you were trying to build a fire department.
Oh, no.
Sam, why do we need a fire department? When he went up there, he sent us ninety million dollars to go to the fire department. I was like, that's not what they're trying to do though.
And with the police, uh, funds that we currently have. Uh, one, when I came into office, I didn't realize what all came out of that, right? And I think that's a topic for discussion later, but still some of your thunder. You know, I had to pay some of their salaries, a portion of some of their salaries, uh, this charity salary.
He pays a VP and L in this building.
I, I have to, you know, I, I help the, the cost of all of that. So yes, your tax dollars are being used for the police department, but I got expenses inside this building. Before I even get back to the police department side that I have to help pay. And nobody realized that. So, and they won't until we sit down and I, not to speak for the trustees, but I think that's kind of the plan at some point moving forward. Is laying all that out and seeing like, okay, the spectrum bill, here's a portion that comes out of the police. You know, the lights, here's that, and you know, here's this and here's that.
Right. And I'm used to looking at financials. Um, I worked for those for twenty years. So I understand financials and. And summaries and I understand how all that works. Um, so I know how to read all those lines. But sometimes the questions I have about those lines, um. It's not readily apparent to me because I don't know how Perry Township is set up versus, um. A Fortune five hundred company, but I can read them. I think, don't get me wrong. Um, one of the things that happened in the last meeting, just real quick, is we, uh, we thought that there was miles and miles of these roads. That you guys take care of. I went out here, rode it on my motorcycle, our motorcycle ride, rode every ride to seventeen miles. I thought, they only take care of seventeen miles, thirty-four both sides. I thought you guys had like fifty miles of road out here to take care of. Seventeen, that's all there is. So again, I kind of went, okay, something else that was a misnomer to me when I left here that meeting, that first time. Because it sounded like you guys had all these cemeteries to do and all these. Uh, I'm not sure how long it actually takes to mow thirty-four miles. Like, uh, doesn't seem like that would be. Two weeks worth of work, but that's neither here nor there. So again, it's just, part of that is just a misnomer that I have. But it's all about the money. It's all about where is this money going? And is the taxpayers of Perry Township getting their fair share? You know, or, or they actually see it where that money's going? And is there a better way to tell people this is where your money went? Or do they have to come in here and go, okay, where'd that money go?
So it, it all starts with a question, right? Some people will say, well, gosh, what are they spending money on? But they won't take the initiative. You coming in here, it's taking the initiative. They're not easy conversations. All of our phones are available. Call us, email us, stop by and set up an appointment for us to come down here and talk with you. Same thing with the chief, same thing with Caleb. Uh, we don't hide how the township spends money. It's all public record. It's all freely available and we're more than happy to sit down with you and, and show you so you can see. Now, you may get tired about halfway through, but you know, it, it's, it's a lot of paperwork is what I'm saying. It, it's, it's boring. It's a lot of paperwork. It's a lot of little numbers. Um, but you know, every meeting, when we go through the consent agenda. We're approving minutes or the electronic warrants. And check numbers. So that, that's the, how we're spending the money. We have a list of those which, which are published with the meeting minutes. And then the checks, usually it's, it's a range of checks. But those are also defined in the minutes as to what each check was for, who it went to and for how much.
And I can see it on the financial.
Right.
Back page of the file. I can see.
I'm just starting to walk through the minutia a little bit of, of how this works. So at the beginning of the year, we go through appropriations, which is where we take. What we believe we're going to get from the county, from, through the different funds that we have. And how we're going to allocate those with areas of need, areas of deficit. And figuring out how we're going to support the roads for that year, how we're going to support the cemeteries for that year. How the police force is going to support the township through that year. Um. I would welcome you to come to one of those because it's, it's on the verge of being gymnastics. Because the need is here, the money's here.
It's just like at home with your electric bill and, and, and when you go to the grocery store. You come home and you thought, oh, well, the, it's a little extra money. I thought I was going to go to my electric bill. Well, now I can't because, okay, so what do I do? Do I pay him? And let him go or you let, let his employees go or how do I? Do we pay, pay the light bill? Because you guys' light bill was going up, so is ours.
Evidently, there's eighty-six people in Perry Township that don't think they have to pay their garbage bill. So I.
So I, 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 I would welcome you. All of us are, are contact information. You can contact the offices. Ms. Kaler can connect you with any one of us. I would personally be happy to sit down with you. I probably wouldn't be much use to you, like, uh, Ms. Grill or the chief or Caleb. But I'd be happy to do what I can. So, you know, if you have questions, you know, let us know. You don't have to wait for a meeting to let us know. You can reach out to the offices. If Karen's out doing zoning work, leave a message. We'll get back with you. We've been trying very hard to be as open about things as we can be. Um, and that's what I was saying about the fire levy. We took a different approach to the fire levy this year. We collected all the information we could possibly get. And we put it out there for people to see and make them read it. But we did everything that we could do to put that information in one place. We advertised it. It was in the paper. It was on the Facebook page and it was on the website. Short of going door to door with a megaphone, that, that's really all that we can do. Um, and that really, we learned a lot through that process of what works. We did a couple of surveys to get inputs from the residents. We pivoted on a couple of things based on those. Um, and we look to do more of the same with police levy. And if in a couple of years we have to do a cemetery levy. We're establishing processes now that didn't exist before. Basically, they decided when to do a levy. And what, how much the levy should be, and they put it out there. We're actually doing the math on. How much non-operational overhead comes out of chief's budget? Because there's a lot that he pays for that isn't his responsibility, but it's how things have to happen to run the township.
And that wasn't done with the last.
It wasn't. And, you know, and I, I've said it before that other former trustees did charge a lot against the staff. On for their salaries.
And it also comes out of the road crew.
It does.
Yeah. Cause he gets, he gets that for salaries, paper over here, things like that. And we take a portion of his money too.
We, we do. And we're actually working on fixing that to where we do static percentages for every month. We're working towards that. But that's part of getting all of our books in order. We've been working with the state to go through auditing. Uh, investigations and other things just to clean up the township's finances. And all of that that we have power over. Is there for the public to see. There's nothing obfuscated, nothing hidden. And we welcome people to come in and, you know, ask questions. We'll go through it with you. Because trust me, every time that I, I look at the financial stuff, I learn something. And I appreciate that because, you know, it is not as straightforward necessarily, but there's a lot of data.
But.
The more you go through the data, the more questions you'll have, but the smarter you'll get too. So.
Alright, I got, thanks.
Right. Was there anybody else that wanted to speak?
Yeah. The only one question that I had was. Uh, when he went up to talk to the fire chief. Um, they said that they had several years. Uh, from Jackson Township that they went several years. For the amount of money that they pay. Uh, to get fire relief for that township, but we only go year to year.
We have a three-year contract with them and that's, that's what you can get.
That's Ohio revised code.
That's Ohio revised code.
So we, we're doing the same thing Jackson Township is.
Yes.
Alright.
And they had a fire levy on and they voted in a new one. So Lebanon got extra money because Jackson approved it.
Yeah, they were already paid.
Yeah.
Where we're, we're, we haven't even voted on it.
Yeah, right.
Well, it's already been on once and failed.
Yes.
And I called the, the board of elections and they explained to me that whole process. And I think he said.
October eighteen.
The, the fifteenth of September, you should be able to read what it's going to say on the ballot, the exact wording.
Yes.
Um, I think, I thought he told me it was fifteen September, you actually be able to read it.
So either have it turned in like August second or seventh.
The first week of August.
Week of August.
Um, and if you get on your smartphone and you download a Ohio voter info app, you can put in your name. It will bring it up. You can look at a sample ballot of what's on your, where your voting precinct is and if you're registered.
It's not on there, right?
It's not on there yet, but I just want everybody to know that.
That's what he was telling me.
It's a great, great source of information that, uh.
And I often use polling locations.
It does. Yep.
Yeah. And we are, we are working on, uh, uh, like trustee Harkinson said, uh. What'd you call? Uh, getting with the township or the New Lebanon and Brookfield and having a town hall with them. And not here, we'd like to have it at the firehouse and then, you know, ask them, you know, what's this? What does this mean? That's what we're hoping for. So, yeah.
And we didn't just arbitrarily pick numbers. They told us, we need this to bring you service. And then whatever we have, we have to split in half because it goes two ways.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
So.
And we have a looming, uh, contract that we have to work with them after the first of the year. But if the fire ballot, uh, the fire levy doesn't pass, uh, we're going to have a hard time getting our contract for fire services renewed.
Yeah, I was, I was explaining that, um. Legally, because I had asked that quite. While you guys were off having.
Did you come up to the microphone to say that?
Excuse me.
Did you come up to the microphone? Sorry Hannah.
Uh, when you guys had left to have your meeting, we kind of had a small meeting. And, um, you guys aren't allowed to talk about the levy. As township, as a group of people that work for the township, but as individuals you are. And I had questioned, it seemed like it was unconstitutional. For both fire departments to refuse to come out and take care of us, whether they were being paid or not. But the chief in New Lebanon explained that it literally is against the law. For them to come out, either one of them, Brookfield or New Lebanon, to come out and take care of. Perry Township out if there is no contract. And that just, it just seems unconstitutional. To let people's houses burn. But so, you know, we found out a lot about what you had said at the last meeting. And, uh, it was clarified as it being, uh. Illegal for them to come out. And so it would be important for us to have the money. I just don't know how to make, to get the word out to more people because. It's almost word of mouth. And we're kind of restricted because while we can provide facts. We have to be very careful because we can't provide opinions.
Right.
We can't speak for or against the levy. Only you can, only if you are not.
You can't use any funds from the township to promote it.
And you can't give a personal opinion if you're within this building or acting as. Uh, a person of the township. You can only say your opinion. When you are at home and you clarify, I am not working. This is my.
As a resident, my opinion.
But I, but also we can't use our Facebook pages.
No.
Like my individual Facebook page, I cannot say anything on it pertaining to the levy.
And that's a, that's a gray line that we want to be very careful that we don't false, right?
So you don't get sued.
Right. But I will add to that, that we are, we, there has been a, uh, committee of residents. That are getting signs and going to be doing an, an information campaign outside of us. So, uh, that's, uh. Ms. Bertelson, Bonnie Bertelson.
At one of your meetings.
Yes. Yeah. If, if, if you'd like her contact info.
Or her email is in the minutes too.
It is in the minutes. So, uh, reach out to her and find out what her plan is, her committee's plan is for putting those signs out and everything. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you so much. Is there any other questions? Okay. At this time, I make a motion in accordance with Ohio Revised Code, section one twenty-one point twenty-two, paragraph G one. To move to, to adjourn to executive session to discuss compensation of a public employee.
Second motion.
Trustee music?
Yes.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
Trustee Mears?
Yes.
Alright, I make a motion to return to regular session.
Second.
Trustee Mears?
Yes.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
Trustee Music?
Yes.
At this time, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Trustee Music?
Yes.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
Trustee Mears?
Yes.